All right, we've got a forum, so go ahead and call this meeting to order at seven oh two P M. This is the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee meeting for Monday, January tenth, twenty twenty two. I informed the committee and audience members that this meeting is being recorded, and for those on the committee and our guests, if you are not speaking, please make sure you are muted. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Dave? Jess?
Yes.
June?
Here.
Lisa? Mike? Randy? Susan?
Here.
Um. Here.
And I am here, so that's five. Our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee will be held at seven P M on Monday, January twenty fourth. For the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes from December sixth, as well as a handful of accounts payable and payable warrants. So I'll take a motion to approve that as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's Tom, June. Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous, thank you. Public Communications, Robin, just to confirm, I don't believe we had anybody slated to speak this evening.
No, Craig.
Thank you. So Chairperson's report, just briefly wanted to say, I hope everyone had a joyous holiday, was able to take some form of break and relax a bit, and had a happy new year. As we round the corner of the school year, we're entering the depths of budget season. So I do really encourage and ask that the public, as well as the school committee, but ask that the public be involved in our budget process through these meetings, through our finance committee meetings, through your local select board, and also local finance committees, let them know the importance of education, let them know you support the budgets. And if you don't or have questions, by all means, reach out to myself or any member of the committee, and we'll certainly get the answers that you're looking for. We'll talk more about the budget message later on the agenda, but I do, again, highly encourage folks to to be involved. And then from a committee perspective, we've got five short months to go in the school year, and just want to make sure that we're all focused on our goals that we'd committed to for this year, and just keep our eye on that to get that, those completed. And just continue doing the great work, and certainly want to thank the teachers and the administration staff for a great first half of the year. I know it's not been easy. And I'm sure I speak on behalf of the committee that we thank everybody for their efforts and keeping the focus on the children of the district, because it's certainly not easy day to day, and you guys are more in the thick of it than than the rest of us, so thank you to all of you for that. Next, we have the student representative report.
I believe we have a student.
Also somewhere.
Yes.
There is.
Oh, we do, excellent.
Um, let's see, hold on. Screen, there we go, hi. Um, I honestly don't have much to report for right now. December went great for the student council and for the student body. We had a great spirit week, and we promoted lots of spirit through, I believe we had ugly sweater day, heat miser versus snow miser day, and pajama day. And then, just recently, right before break, we had what's it called, hold on. Now, um. We had faculty chair, which is pretty much students wrote notes to teachers, and we had a lunch for the teachers, and that went over very well, and that promoted a lot more bonding. And, uh, yeah, I think that's pretty much all I have to say for right now. Student Council is looking forward to a good January, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any questions for Charlie? All right, next up, we have the F Y twenty one audit report, Miss Haines.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, and Nancy, should I promote the two representatives to panelists?
That'd be great, Powers and Sullivan will be joining us, Frank Saretti and Rebecca Gamsby. And the audit report is also in your directories, it's under information reports, I believe, or report information. If you wanted to pull that up, and they're gonna, once they're, once they're connected, Rebecca and Frank will give us a brief overview of the F Y twenty one audit process and report.
Okay, thank you for having us tonight, we appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the district's F Y twenty one audit. I don't know, there's Rebecca, hi Rebecca. So the audit, before I get started, I'd just like to start off by thanking the superintendent, business manager, the accountant, treasurer, and the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received during the course of the audit. They were well prepared for the audit, the information that we needed was readily available to us, and all of our interactions, as always, were professional and courteous, which we appreciate. From a timing standpoint, we conduct the audit in two different phases. The first phase is the preliminary phase, and we completed that work in mid-May. And at that time, we're focused on things like auditing the budget and debt. We test transactions, we audit the federal awards, we basically try to get as much done as we can to try to get a head start on the year-end audit work. The year-end audit work was completed in August, and at that time, we're wrapping up any loose ends that we might have had from the preliminary work, and we're also drafting the audit completing all of our year-end audit procedures. We didn't have to propose any adjustments as a result of the audit to the district books, so the the books and records of the district were complete and accurate, and we didn't find any issues. The only entries that we proposed were just the normal gap adjustments that we proposed to convert your records over to the GAAP financial statements. We test transactions in the expenditure cycle payroll revenue, we test journal entries, and through all that testing, the only comment that came to our attention just related to the use of purchase orders and the approval of purchase orders, and we actually had a comment that's in the management letter related to that, we just noted several instances where the purchase order was dated after the invoice date, and so that just kind of defeats the purpose of the purchase order, which is to make sure that you have available funds in your appropriation and that the purchases have been properly approved. So we just made the recommendation in the management letter that you implement some procedures to try to make sure that purchase orders are getting approved before expenditures actually occur. One of the other the biggest, one of the biggest risk areas in the audit for us on every audit is cash, and so we always look very closely at cash, and one of the most important controls of a cash is that cash is reconciled on a timely basis, on a monthly basis, and that the reconciliations are complete and accurate. And so we looked very closely at the bank reconciliations, we didn't find any, any issues or any concerns, and we found all the reconciliations to be complete and accurate. For financial highlights, if you have the report in front of you, you could flip to page fourteen, I'm just gonna talk quickly about the general fund fund balance, which is the first column on that page, and you can see the fund balance section at the bottom of the page. First column on the left-hand side, general fund fund balance totaled seven point two million dollars. Of that, two point nine million is reported as assigned, and eight hundred twenty-eight thousand of that relates to encumbrances, and another two million dollars relates to E and D that was voted to fund the two thousand twenty-two budget. That left you with unassigned fund balance of three point eight million dollars, which is about six percent of your budget. Your E and D is limited by statute to five percent of your subsequent year's budget, and this unassigned fund balance number is like the starting point really for your E and D calculation, and your E and D typically approximates that number. Usually gets reduced depending on different items that might qualify for a reduction under the Department of Revenue rules. And then, next thing I wanted to talk about was just the general fund operating results, and you can see those on page fifty. This is the general fund budget to actual schedule. And in the third column from the right-hand side, that's the actual budgetary amounts, and you can see at the bottom of the page, the net change in fund balance was an increase of one point six million dollars, and that's due to your revenues coming in, million dollars more than budget, and six hundred seventy-two thousand dollars of that relates to your state aid and transportation reimbursements, and then you also had another two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars of miscellaneous revenue, which is unbudgeted, and your expenditures and encumbrances were also one point six million dollars under budget. And that was kind of across the board, instruction was six hundred twenty-two thousand under pupil transportation with seven hundred seven thousand after operations and maintenance, where it was three hundred seventy-one thousand under, and then your employee benefits were two hundred ninety-six thousand over, and that was mainly because you just didn't need to transfer any of that expense for school choice fund. And then those increases were offset by two point one million dollars of E and D that was used to fund the budget. But your budgetary results to us indicate that your budget's well planned, and you have good budgetary controls in place. Also, in your school choice fund, your fund balance at the end of the year totaled one point four million dollars, and that was about a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollar increase from the prior year. And those funds are available for expenditure by the school committee without further appropriation. And your two biggest liabilities are your other post-employment benefits liability, your net pension liability, your other post-employment benefits liability increased by eleven million dollars during the year, and totaled a hundred nine point three million dollars. That's mainly due to a decrease in your discount rate from three percent to two point five percent, and also current year service cost and interest. You contributed another hundred fifty thousand dollars to the O P E P trust fund, and the fund balance in that fund totaled five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars at the end of the year. And your investment income for the year was a hundred thousand dollars, which was a twenty-five percent return, so you had a very good return on your investments there. And for pension, teachers and eligible, other eligible employees are under the mass teachers' retirement pension system, and that liability is fully paid for by the state. The state contributed ten point nine million dollars for to mass teachers' retirement system, and the liability associated with the district that's with mass teachers is eighty-eight point two million dollars. And then for other employees that are not eligible to participate in the mass teacher system, they're members of the Middlesex Regional Retirement System, and your liability with Middlesex totaled twelve point eight million dollars, which was about a six hundred thousand dollar decrease from the prior year, the system went from being forty-nine percent funded, twelve thirty-one nineteen to fifty-three percent funded as of twelve thirty-one twenty. So those are really the things I wanted to highlight for you in the financial statements. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, that's a clean opinion, the best you can get. Means your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. As I mentioned, your budgetary performance indicates that you have a good sound budget process in place, and that you have effective budgetary controls. Reporting that information we received was accurate, and there were no deficiencies in internal controls. There's another report that was issued on federal awards. That's required for any entity that expends more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in federal funds. The district expended three point one million dollars in F Y twenty-one. Nine hundred thirty thousand of that was related to the school lunch and breakfast program. Two point two million related to other education grants that passed through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We were required to audit the child nutrition program and the coronavirus relief fund grants as major programs. And through that testing, we didn't have any findings, any question costs, and we didn't note any deficiencies in internal controls. So again, this is another clean report, best results that you could hope to have for on that. In the third report, there is the management letter, I already talked about the the new current year comment related to the purchase order dates, and there was a couple of prior year comments in there related to conducting a fraud risk assessment, which I believe is still being looked at. And there was one other comment in there related to maintaining personnel earnings records. And just as a best practice, it's a good idea to have a signed copy of those records in the employee files each year, signed by the employee, and also by the supervisor. And so that was really what I wanted to highlight for you from my standpoint, we thought the audit went very well. And like I said, we appreciate all the cooperation and assistance that we got.
Thank you very much, Frank, for joining, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Frank.
My pleasure.
Any questions from the committee? Go ahead, Susan.
I just wanted to say thank you to Nancy and her team for another great report, the management letter. I appreciate that, especially the comments on the effective budgetary controls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yep, just echoing Susan's sentiment, excellent job to everybody in the admin, it's, it's, the district's in great hands.
Yeah, and I echo that as well, and I guess my only comment on the, on the management letter, and maybe this is just to refer Randy to you in the, in the policy committee, is just around the I believe we do have a policy on requiring purchase order, so it'd be good just to look into what the root cause was for that, if it was an emergency situation, or what it happened to be. And just make sure that we just tie off on that aspect of the management order. Anything else from anybody? Right. Well, thank you, appreciate that report.
Pleasure.
On to the annual special education update.
Thank you, Frank, thank Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
All set for me, Craig?
Yes, sir.
So in addition to doing the annual special education report, I wanted to take the opportunity to also talk about a couple of initiatives that we have happening in the district, one of which is a grant that we applied for, and so I consolidated all, all of those into, into one. So I'm gonna share a screen with the presentation, and it kind of rolls into the next chunk. I want to introduce John Judge, who many of you know is our Assistant Director of Special Education, and then Margaret Desalits, who was a teacher for a number of years at the high school, and then the past two years, she's been the Evaluation Team Chairperson for Special Education. Robert, I think you need to allow me to share the screen.
Hold on, I'm looking. Does that work?
Yes, yep, I could share now.
Awesome, thank you.
So I cannot see you, but I'm gonna jump ahead by accident there, I'll be just so I introduce John and Margaret, and in a few minutes, I'm gonna introduce, there's actually three more people on the call that aren't participants that I wanted to introduce, they were part of a special ed mental health grant that we applied for. But just as a quick overview, the Student Services Department and Special Education, obviously, we oversee the special ed services that we provide in the district for both our in-district services for students on I E Ps and also for our students that are in out-of-district placements, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. We also oversee all of the guidance, the counseling, the social work, and the school psychologists, our school nursing, special education, transportation, all of the related services that accompany special education and students on five oh four plans, speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, orientation, mobility, et cetera. Homeless and foster care, education coordination, and I put a a little asterisk next to that, because we've seen a significant increase in students, both who are homeless and in foster care. Last year, we had twenty-one families who were homeless and twenty-seven students who were in foster care. At present, our number of families who are homeless is much less, but our number of students that are in foster care in the district is at thirty-six, which is the highest we've ever had. And, and part of that reason is obviously, you know, COVID created a major disruption in a lot of, a lot of families' lives. A lot of D C F has intervened in many instances and pulled students from the homes. And so when we talk about foster care, education, and coordination, we're talking about families in our district who are foster care providers. And we have a handful of foster care providers in our district, which is wonderful. A couple of families that have multiple children at one time, and so we work very closely with them to make sure that those students either are enrolled in our school, or they're enrolled in their school of origin, and we get them back to that school. And then we also see all, we also oversee all students on five oh four plans in the district. The pandemic has, has changed, changed things quite a bit, to say the least. You know, there's been some good, good things coming out of the pandemic, and, you know, just, just some things that I wanted the committee and people in the committee to be aware of. You know, since the start of closure, we started running our, our team meetings virtually, and while initially that was a little bit of a or actually a giant change of pace for us, we continued to run them remotely, and what this has done is increased participation. Parents don't have to take half a day off of work, or days off of work, or put in for sick leave. We have parents participate in virtual team meetings from, from their place of employment. We had one parent, you know, driving a truck, and he was on, on the call and participating in his daughter's team meeting a few weeks ago, which is wonderful. And so we've seen a huge increase in participation for parents. We, we have, we are now paperless in the, in the special ed department. We send all of our I E Ps and progress reports and consent for evaluations out electronically to parents and guardians. We let them know they can request a paper copy, should they wish, every once in a while, every once in a while they do. But this is, we've seen about a five thousand dollar reduction in just paper and postage costs alone in sending things out electronically. Some of the other things that we've seen, or the pandemic has changed, because parents are concerned for their child's well-being and how they're doing in school, or how they might be doing socially or emotionally, we've seen a significant increase in requests for initial special education evaluations or for additional assessments for children, and then for students to have their three-year reevaluations done early. And I'll talk about that in a little bit, but this has created quite a, quite a strain on our ability to do these assessments, because as you know, we're governed by certain timelines for when we receive requests for a special education evaluation. We've also seen an increase in parents' guardians seeking either assistance from an attorney or from an advocate to help with the team process. Sometimes parents aren't happy with what the district has proposed, and so they, they'll seek, they'll seek the assistance of an advocate or of, of a an attorney, which is certainly fine. That's, that's caused us to have an increase in our legal fees, because oftentimes, if parents have an attorney attending a team meeting, we also need to have our own attorney present as well. But we're navigating that, and we're doing well with that, and we're seeking resolution and, and finding resolution in most cases. We've seen an increase in requests for the district to fund independent evaluations. If parents are not happy with the evaluations that the district has conducted, they have a right to request the district to pay for some outside independent evaluations. Whenever we receive these requests, the district has five business days to respond, and that's one of the things that Margaret and John helped with very much, because we, we're very much on top of that and working with families and trying to come to resolution when they want to seek outside assessments. We've also seen a pretty big increase in requests for copies of student records. Parents who maybe get an advocate involved or get an attorney involved, their advocate or attorney wants to see an entire copy of the student's record. That's everything from the student's cumulative file to everything from the health office files to their entire special education file, to all their progress reports and everything. When we receive these requests for copies of student records, we have ten days to reply, and we generally reply, you know, much, much sooner than that. But that's something that, that we've seen, you know, out of the Special Education Office, requests for increased copies. And then we've also seen a request for, you know, follow-up team meetings. If, if, if the district proposes services for a student that they feel is appropriate, and the parent is not in agreement, the parent has a right to request, or the guardian has a right to request a follow-up team meeting, and we're seeing, you know, and so I just want you to be aware, because this, this is what our special education liaisons are working through, in addition to doing their very best to, to teach children, is we're seeing lots, lots of, you know, requests for more meetings, requests for more evaluations, requests for student record copies.
Hey, Brad, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Not at all.
So I know members of the committee, myself included, have received inquiries from parents either looking for assistance or more information related to these, these processes. And I know there's legalities with, with us getting involved, especially with, with students matters like this. What do you recommend that, that we, as a committee, do when we're contacted by by the, by the citizens that we represent, like, how, how can we help you, but also make sure we're following the process?
So, so the, the state about twenty years ago developed something called the Parents Rights Brochure, which is a very long, I believe, a seventeen-page-long document. And that outlines everything from the initial eligibility process, their process for, you know, seeking resolution if they don't agree with what's been proposed. And so, and I'm familiar with a couple of, a couple of the parents that have reached out, you know, we, we do our very, very best, and we have monthly special ed meetings with all of our, all of our buildings. John, Margaret, and I run monthly special ed meetings, we're constantly sending out, you know, memorandums and processes and things of that nature. And oftentimes, if a parent is, is not happy with, with, you know, the result of the team meeting, or what's been proposed at the team meeting, I will direct them to that Parents Rights Brochure, which outlines all of their options, because I've always said, I don't want a parent not to know what their options are, and in some cases, these parents are simply upset because they didn't get the resolution that, that, that they wanted, you know, or they're seeking, you know, additional one-to-one reading services, and, and the team is saying, no, your son or daughter does not need that level of services, he's making the, he's making the effective progress that he's supposed to be at this point. And so, you know, I, I, I would direct them to that, to the Parents Rights Brochure, and I can share that with the committee, and I, I don't do that to push the parents off, but I, but this, this Parents Rights Document really clearly outlines, you know, process for disciplined students with disabilities, process for, you know, rejecting what's been proposed, process for, you know, removing consent for an evaluation, or removing consent for, you know, for a placement. I guess, I guess that's my one suggestion, and because, because I know that sometimes parents aren't always happy with what's been proposed.
I appreciate that, and I just want to make sure that again, that, for me and the committee, that we're following the process and not deviating from that or putting anybody in an awkward position by, by overstepping, so I appreciate that explanation.
And the, and the other difficult thing is that the special education team process, you know, a special education team includes a special educator, a general educator, a school psychologist, if he or she has done an evaluation. And so a special education team is able to make certain decisions or propose certain services for a student. And sometimes parents will reach out to me because they're not happy with what the team proposed. And my, my, my comment out of the gate with these parents is to say, please understand that I am not the team, nor can I override the team. I can certainly, you know, discuss what's going on, or I can, I can suggest that the team reconvene to discuss, or I can tell you that you can reject what's been proposed, and that will initiate a certain, a certain process moving forward, but that I alone am not the team, you know, and so that's, I think sometimes that's confusing for people, because they feel like if they go to a certain person, that that person can override the team process.
Great, thank you, Dave, did you have a quick question?
Yes, can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Thank you, just looking at this, can you, just best estimate, how, what, what kind of increase are we looking at, are we looking at, you know, two to three more, you know, sets of parents?
Oh, you mean as far as overall, or?
Yeah, just like, I mean, are we seeing like a massive increase, or is this just, you know?
I would say that, fair estimate, it's, it's either double or triple across the board, I'm looking at, so for, for example, student copies, or copies of student records, my office has generated nine copies this year, and typically throughout the entire school year, we'll generate between four and six. So we're at the halfway point of the school year, and we're already at nine. You know, independent evaluations, we probably get about five to seven requests per year, right now, we're already at twelve. You know, and that doesn't say that we're agreeing to fund the outside evaluations, if, if we don't agree, we have a form letter that was created by our attorney, and we send it to the parents, and we let them know what their options are, but that we don't agree, and we don't agree to fund the outside evaluations. And we don't agree to fund the outside evaluation because sometimes these are $2,000, $2,500, $3,000. And so we have a right to say no to those. And that, and that as far as parents with either advocates or with, with attorneys, that, that's at, at the very least triple. I, I, I think we have about twenty five families right now that either have an attorney or an advocate. And in some, in, in many cases, advocates are very helpful to the process because the parents, they can explain it in a way that's maybe less threatening than us trying to explain it to them. Or maybe they're more trusting of the advocate explaining to them. So we have some advocates that we work very, very well with and I'm glad that a parent tells me, oh, so and so is, is representing me as, as my child's advocate and I know the advocate and I know the advocate follows the process. So.
Yeah. And then just kind of a, a general idea, why, why do you think we're seeing an increase kind of across the board with all of these?
I, I think that students, students who receive special ed services had a very difficult time during the period of closure and during the period of hybrid, hybrid learning. And if you all remember, the only students that we brought back for four days of in-person instruction were students that were in our special education sub separate programs. And so we might have a student with a, you know, with a learning disability who didn't qualify for, for one of our, one of our sub separate programs. And that student had a very difficult time during hybrid because lots of our students with, you know, on IEPs had a really, really hard time with remote learning. And so I feel like those parents are, are, are seeking out whatever help they can get to try to get their child back to where they were before the period of closure.
Excellent. Thank you so much and thanks to everybody in your group. Appreciate it.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Randy, do you have a question?
Actually, I think Brad just answered it at the end there. I was going to ask him. As far as the increase in wanting evaluations, how much is this related to the pandemic and the remote learning? And parents feeling that their kids are behind? And how much actually is it that the kids are falling behind or is it just a large cohort? Not, you know, not just special education, but just a large cohort that we're still trying to bring up that wouldn't qualify for special education at this point?
Are, are you asking, are you asking me if that's my hypothesis or? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think any of us to sit here and say that a majority, you know, a very high percentage of all of our students struggled during the period of closure and hybrid learning. And now that we're back to, you know, full time in-person learning while still juggling the pandemic. You know, I think a lot of these parents are seeking out whatever services they can get because they're very worried about their children. And, and I, I think that's, I think that's why. And, and, and we kind of go back to the, you know, the, the, lots of the people, you know, in the field who are saying, let's get these kids exposed to this level of curriculum again and robust instruction and they will get caught back up. But the parents of our students with learning disabilities or with social emotional issues are, are hyper concerned about their children. And I think that's a, that's a result of it. So just, that kind of segues me to this slide, you know, what are we seeing as far as students, you know, and to, to start the school year? We saw a significant increase in behaviors for our kindergarten, first and our second graders. And, you know, think about a second grader who's never had a quote typical school year. And so we were seeing significant behaviors across the board, primarily in our very younger ages. And then we started seeing them in our high school ages and now we're seeing them in the middle schools. You know, and not all of these students are special ed eligible student. We're also seeing an increase in student hospitalizations, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. All of our special ed programs, you know, we're, we're, we're jamming. Our, if, if you walk through the building at, at the Nissett, Nissett Tissett or Varnum or the high school where we house the special ed programs. Those programs are bustling because we found a lot of kids eligible for that intensive, you know, more need programs. You know, and our, I've said this for the last five years, you know, this population that we have special ed is evolving. You know, we're seeing a, a higher number of kids with social emotional needs and more intensive social emotional needs. More students on the spectrum, on the autism spectrum, and then students who sadly have been experienced with trauma, who, who've been exposed or experienced trauma. And a lot of the trauma informed care, you know, initiatives that we've done and training for our staff is really centered around that. So what have we done to address these needs? You know, because we're seeing an increase in the request for assessments, we've increased our assessment capacity. We've used some of our ESR money and a couple of grants that I'll share with you in a few minutes. We've hired, we've hired two part-time speech and language pathologists who just retired last year from the district. We hired an additional school psychologist who's doing assessments for us to help us with this influx. We've hired additional support staff, a paraprofessional behavior background teacher, and this is some of the grant money that we've used to make these purchases, I mean, to make, to make these staff increases. In a few minutes as well, so we also received a grant from the North Central Community Health Foundation. And we have two mental health liaisons that receive a stipend and they help us support, you know, that they help us support the mental health staff, track our student hospitalizations, coordinate wraparound services for families after students have become hospitalized. And then we've also provided appointed professional development for staff working with these kids that have been identified with high needs. So this, this outlines the grants that the district has available to, you know, the top two grants are grants that we, these are entitlement grants that we receive every year. You know, and the two forty grant helps us offset our special education costs. We, we generally use that to pay paraprofessional salaries. The two six two grant is a much smaller grant. That's, you know, we also pay for paraprofessional salaries. The next five grants are grants that we just saw this past fiscal year and we applied for them. The American Rescue Plan, General Sped, American Rescue Plan, preschool are grants that were available to us this year. And those are the grants that we've used to hire those additional assessment staff and additional behavioral staff. The three oh two grant is a relatively small grant, about $6,400. But that's to help our families who have become homeless with anything from, you know, buying them clothes or buying them backpacks or buying them school supplies. We're purchasing a handful of Chromebooks, we're purchasing hotspots for families who are homeless so they can have access to the internet. And then the Community Foundation of North Central Massachusetts was a two-year grant that we received last year. And we use that to fund the two mental health liaison positions that I'll talk about next slide. And then the, the big grant, this is the Bright Program Grant. We applied for this right at the end of November. Grant six thirteen through DESI and it's supporting students' social, emotional, learning, behavioral, mental health and wellness. And this is a $150,000 grant. And I'll explain when we get that grant and I feel very confident that we will, what we're going to earmark that money towards because it's very limited of what you can use it towards. So just before we do that, I want to talk about our special ed statistics. It hasn't changed very much. It hasn't changed very much in the seven years since I've been in the district. You know, John Judge, Margaret and I worked very hard to bring students back from out of district placements. If you remember last year, we brought back eight students from our district placements. We're seeing kind of a pendulum swing the other way this year, primarily because we've had to place some students out with very significant behavioral, you know, behavioral concerns, students who, students who were, were actively attempting to hurt themselves. Really some sad things that we saw. And so just at, at the start of the school year, we've already sent out nine kids into primarily therapeutic programs for some of these significant behavioral uppers that we've seen with students. Just kind of to continue to go online with the social emotional learning, which has been our focus for the last couple of years as well. You know, the district continues to use Project Interface, which is the mental health referral service. And, and we use that, we use that frequently. All of our mental health clinicians do. We send out an email to all of our families to start the school year. Every year I get a handful of emails from parents or from community members saying, thank you so much for this, you know, making this available. We were able to find a clinician for my daughter. We were able to find somebody for, or whoever. We're continued members of the Massachusetts School Mental Health Consortium. Right now, we're one of forty six districts in the state that are part of this consortium that meets monthly. And then as far as, you know, the monthly health support team meetings, trainings, keeping track on trends and then student hospitalizations, which I'll talk about in a minute. So that grant that we received from the, the Community Foundation, we, we did a job description and we posted it and two of our internal people applied and they are Natasha Santiago, who's our adjustment counselor at the Nissett Tissett Middle School and then Haley Stables, who's an adjustment counselor at Hawthorne Brook. And what they do, and we split the district in half, Natasha has all of Pepperell and Haley has all of Townsend and Ashby. And what they do is when we have a student hospitalized, they, they facilitate and work with the families and work with the, the, the school where the student was hospitalized from. And they try to make it, you know, stabilize the student and get them back into their home school. And also try to coordinate wraparound services for families as well, once it's, once it's been hospitalized. Since the start of the twenty one twenty two school year and in the packets that you received last week, I think I had nine on there and we had two additional hospitalizations at the end of last week. And so since the start of the twenty one twenty two school year, we've had eleven kids hospitalized. Or, and I, I printed off, you know, the reasons why from anything from, you know, students with suicidal ideation, students with severe anxiety, students who have attempted to purposely lay overdose. And this, this is one of the scary trends that we've seen. Of those eleven kids, nine of them have been female. Historically, females are a little bit more willing to talk about what's bothering them as opposed to males. And males, when, when they're frustrated and upset, tend to act out more than females do. And if this is a trend that we're seeing in the district as well, and so eighty two percent of these kids are females. Another alarming statistic is that seven of those eleven kids were kids that were not eligible for special education. These are kids who, who became severely depressed, who became suicidal or, or, and, and once they come back out of that hospitalization, we then need to talk about whether or not we want to recommend an evaluation for special ed. Because do they need specialized instruction and supports in order to be successful? And the average length of stay that those, these kids have been out is nine days. So that's a significant chunk of time that kids are missing out of school and then expected to return, you know, back into school with supports, but, but we hope for the best. And that's my segue into that grant that, that we applied for. This is that, that mental health grant, $150,000 and a program called the Bright Program. We worked with and we created a, a program proposal to, to share with this brand, but Bright stands for Bridging Resilient Youth in Transition. And essentially what it is, it's a, you know, it would be a program staffed by a mental health clinician and, and one or two paraprofessionals with a behavior background and provide direct clinical support to kids coming out of hospitalizations. Coordinate the academics with their teachers or their team or, you know, whatever, whatever grade they're in. Work with the family to engage with the family and try to make sure that services are available. Coordinate services for these families. So if we do get this grant, you know, as I mentioned before, we would use that to hire a mental health professional. It might be one of our existing staff that would apply for it. And then a direct clinical support paraprofessional. And then, you know, if we receive this grant, there's no word whether or not the grant's going to be extended into next school year. But we could measure the efficacy of this program by developing it to see how many kids that returned from hospitalizations. Do we have recurring hospitalizations? Do these hospitalizations lead to out of district placements for some of these students? Of the eleven students that have returned, of the eleven students that have been hospitalized this year, we've had to place two into therapeutic programs as a result of their hospitalizations. So that's a lot of information covered in a short period of time. I, I, every, every year at the end, I, I, I talk about how proud I am as the special ed director of the work that we do and, and this year, it's, it's, it's amazing being in the schools and walking through and, and every, everybody from our custodians to our, our, you know, front office staff, to the administrators, to our special and regular ed teachers and support staff. It's really unbelievable what we're doing on a daily basis and, and, and I'm so proud to be working in this district and to be doing what we're doing. So I, I just want everyone to be aware of that. I did forget to mention one name, one of our counselors from the high school who's been in the district for a number of years. Beth Romano, I believe she's on this call as well. She, she was integral in, in working with us to develop that program proposal for the Bright Program as well. So sorry, Beth, I forgot to mention you earlier, but I mentioned you now. Are there any questions? I, I, it'd be a handful of questions. We'll stop sharing.
Questions from anybody?
Have I stopped sharing, Robby? Oh, oh, yeah, here we go.
All right, I am not seeing any questions, but really appreciate the, the overview and brought everything you and your, and your team do to support the students. So much appreciated. Looks like Susan just got her hand up just in time.
No, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm sure it's not easy on you and the staff supporting all these students in very difficult situations and my heart goes out to those students and their families and also to you and your staff. But thank you for us to inspire our students and taking care of them.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Right. And Brad, just to confirm, that was the, the, the update, the youth in transition and the?
I, I rolled them all into one, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we didn't miss anything.
A giant convoluted ball of, of information, yes.
Much appreciated. Thank you again.
Yeah.
All right, up to Superintendent Morgan.
Thank you. So I'll just be brief because I do have the budget to present later on, just a couple of updates. Pretty much focused on COVID nineteen. For those of you that did not hear, today, the Department of Education extended the mask mandate. It was supposed to expire this Saturday, January fifteenth through February twenty eighth, which is a Monday. So the mask mandate will continue through the month of February. And as I, they are actually calling it a mask requirement. I know in the past, you know, they've been careful with the words that they've chosen, but they are actually calling it a requirement coming down from DESI and it is in partnership with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. So in many ways, the Department of Public Health would even, you know, it's not something that, that Governor Baker has done. It's not a governor's order. But last year, when this did happen, the governor did take his orders, so to speak, from the Mass Department of Public Health. So masking mandate is going to be in place throughout the state through Monday, February twenty eighth. The other piece I just wanted to touch on was that today we did reach two hundred and twenty-three positive cases on our dashboard. And with that, I, I do want to just alert the committee what our intent is with regard to the dashboard moving forward. At this point in time, maintaining the dashboard has created a situation where basically our nurses and, you know, some select people at, you know, some of our schools, but primarily our nurses are working mornings, the school day, afternoon, weekends, evenings, even in some cases over vacation to get numbers in place and to try to get as accurate number as possible posted on to the COVID dashboard. It's not just cases in school. We're also relying on parents to report to us and then having to backtrack and see when the actual case began so that we can, you know, figure out how many days to run it on the dashboard. But on top of that, they're also dealing with the, the ever changing quarantine guidelines and contact tracing. Quite honestly, at this point in time, if we were to continue with this, I would need, I would say, three to five more staff people hired in order to get this done. Our nurses cannot get this done. They're not able to complete other parts of their job. So at this point in time, it is our intent to update the dashboard on Fridays and to post that on Fridays because we cannot, too much is falling through the cracks in the schools. And it's really become, it, it, it's become overwhelming and it's not just us, it's happening everywhere. And this is what other districts are beginning to do as well. But to do it in real time, to do it every day is just not even feasible anymore. And it's not, again, it's not just, it, it isn't just updating the numbers, it's the contact tracing. It's all the back behind the scenes work that has to be done to make sure that the numbers are accurate. And it's gotten to a point where the nurses aren't able to do their jobs. They're going without lunches, they're going without any breaks at all and they are working well, well, well beyond the contracted day. And it, it's gotten to a point where if we were to keep this up, and it was difficult prior to the Omicron variant, it was, it was hard before. But now it's gotten to the point where it's truly taken over the operation of the school and it, it, it's not feasible, it's, it's not doable anymore. So beginning this Friday, it is our intent to begin posting the numbers weekly to the website. In a very clear space, we'll put it right on the front page of the website, but it's not something that we can continue to do without additional staffing. And when I say additional staffing, we need the additional staffing to do what we're doing now. But it's pretty clear we're not going to get the staffing because we can't fill positions that we have. Because there is no workforce to draw from. So I'll take questions on that before we move on to the rest.
I've got Dave and then Susan.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. I
Yeah, thank you, Brad. I know I sent out a bunch of questions to you earlier and I appreciate the response. It was just in general, how can we make it more prominent? Because earlier today it was a hundred and ninety-seven, gone up almost thirty more just over the course of a day. I guess my question just changed kind of based off of what you've just said, though. Do we feel like it's, like the, the wave that we're going through right now is just overwhelming the schools?
Overwhelming the schools in which way? I think it's overwhelming.
Like we are, so one of, one of the questions I know I asked you earlier is we have, we have case numbers, right, two hundred and twenty-three. What did our attendance look like today and last week? You know, what percentage of our student body would you say is absent? And what percentage of our teacher population would you say is absent or staff population rather?
So staff, you know, the numbers on both ends are high. I'd say for, for students, we're, we're right around twenty-five percent, twenty to twenty-five percent in the district. That's absent. Staff, we have been able to, to, to make it through, so to speak. There have been schools that have had to go remote or call a snow day in order to make that happen. But I do want to be clear that when it comes to going remote for a day or something along those lines, that is not something that can be done without the approval of DSC. You have to call DSC, you have to get their permission to do that. If you don't, the day does not count. And you, you basically will have to deal with, you know, deal with DSC on a time and learning issue at the end of the year. But we're not able to, you know, calling a snow day, for instance, for a particular building is something that some districts have done. I just want to be clear that if that were to happen in N M, we have to understand that we would likely be hitting a, a, a price point that would be extremely costly to the district in that we would have to have food service for another day. We would have to run all of our buses for another day, even if it's, even if it's one school. Because the way the busing works out is keep, the bus drivers work of, get paid for a full day regardless of how many runs they, they make. That's how, that's how they retain their bus drivers. So by closing a school or two schools or even by closing the district, it could come with a significant cost. Now, I'm not putting that above safety because in order to close the school, we would need DSC approval anyway, and it's not something that they're doing. It, it's not an easy process to make that happen. But I just want to, we're not at a point, our numbers are very high. It's really no different from other districts and we are able to, we're making it. It, it's, it's not, you know, it's not easy, it's not smooth, but we're making it and we're being, we're, we're able to stay open. And the hope is, is that we've all seen these cases go up after Thanksgiving. We've seen them go up after, you know, the, the, the winter break. We're likely going to see it go up again in February, but the cases do tend to die down ten days outside of a vacation. So Thanksgiving, again, the couple of weeks after, we're very busy, we barely recovered, we went into the December break. Now we're a few days into that, recovering from that and hopefully things will slow down again prior to the February break where they'll likely pick up again. But it's, it's not something, you know, as we've all heard, the, the Omicron variant in particular is something that is infecting people that are vaccinated and unvaccinated. It, it doesn't really seem to have, it, it's, it's not picky, so to speak. So the numbers look like they're trending high, but the illnesses are less severe that come with it. But again, at this point in time, it's, it's beyond just keeping the district open. It's also providing the level of service that we need to provide without having all of our attention on COVID and contact tracing and quarantine protocols. And, you know, there are certain things we have to do, but if we, if we solely focus on COVID, we're not, we're not going to be able, we're going to be doing it to service to the kids.
You all set, Dave? And I, and I
I can let somebody in top and first.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, so the, the, the topic of this is really about the dashboard and the maintenance of it and the value it's providing and the burden it's putting on the district. So I want to make sure we keep that discussion in that realm. That's the item on the agenda, so. Susan, I think you had your hand up next.
Yeah, I, my only question was, is the only thing we're stopping is updating the dashboard or were there other activities that we're stopping to?
It would just be the dashboard at this point in time. I, I will say that there are some schools in the state at the high school level who have stopped contact tracing at the high school level only. Just because it's, again, it's gotten to the point where it's, you know, you, you can only control what's happening in school. And it still appears as though the majority of our issues are coming from outside of school. So when you're contact tracing in school, you know, it does lend to questions or lead to questions, I should say. Because the majority of infections are happening when school is not in session. And we can see that when kids are coming back from vacation, when the cases skyrocket.
The, are we still able to have enough test kits to be able to do tests to stay for students that are okay?
Because right now, we're okay with test kits. We, we actually have some leftover from, you know, the, the staff kits that were given out. And we, we had a bank of tests prior to that as well. So again, we're, we're being careful with how we use those so that we don't run out. But at some point in time, I would guess that they're going to have to replenish those supplies as well.
Because I've heard of students that are close contacts staying home that are fully vaccinated, staying home for the five days. I don't know whether that's a choice or whether they don't realize they can test to stay, test and stay.
No, it's, it's pretty clear. You know, when a student is identified, they, they're given their options from the school. But we do have a lot of parents. I think the app, the high absenteeism rate is strictly because of the variant and the fact that it is getting around the vaccine and that it is parents are self-selecting to keep their kids home, which is certainly their choice.
Right. So I don't want to give anyone, it doesn't sound like we don't have like twenty-five percent of our kids infected. It's twenty-five percent of our kids aren't there, but there's a lot of reasons they're not there. They're not there because they're a close contact, they're not there because they're not feeling well, they're not there because their parents aren't comfortable having them there. There's a lot of reasons.
Yes.
Okay.
Susan, anybody else? Dave, did you still have something over you?
Yeah, I guess, um, maybe instead of just putting what the cases are, putting what the, you know, like percent attendance is on the website, something like that, because I'm not super comfortable and I, and I understand the workload, you know, I, I understand the pressure and I'm, and I'm really thankful to all of our nursing staff. It's, I can't even imagine what they're doing this year. But also, though, if, if we have a quarter of our students out every single day, I mean, that's, that's, that's greater than anything that we've, that we've seen so far during the course of this. And I, I'm wondering just I think, I think people should be able to see, I guess, some of the statistics that our, that our schools are going through. I understand that's extra workload for people, but you know, if, if we're looking at a quarter of our population isn't in school every day, you know, for a week, two weeks, I know for myself and granted, this is one small case. I've had days where over half of my kids are out, you know, and it's just not a productive school day. And, and I don't love the idea that we are at our highest numbers, you know, I mean, four times greater than what it was last year. You know, at certain points and it's so overwhelming that we can't even update the information that we're just going to say, ah, it's a mess and, and kind of toss our hands up. And I'm not, and I'm not saying, I, I'm not trying to, to, you know, say the nurses aren't doing a, a good job, they're doing an incredible job. I'm just wondering what possible resources and what possible information we can try to get out daily. If putting, you know, the test day and all that kind of specific data in is too much. I'm just wondering, is there some way that we can upload the attendance or, you know, it's something to give parents a, an understanding of what their kids are walking into that day. Does that, does that make sense?
It, it does. I just, I mean, I, I will say that twenty-five is probably high. We're probably around eighteen to nineteen when I go back and look at the numbers, but it's still high, eighteen or nineteen percent. It's still high for, for an absenteeism rate. I just, you know, again, if the committee wants the attendance numbers weekly, I, I don't know what it's accomplishing. I, I do think, because also the numbers are going to drop. They're not, they're not going to remain.
I think Ms. Milligan's going to jump out of her chair. I think she wants to say something.
Do you like that? Like, there's no way we can do attendance numbers because we don't filter the information. We couldn't filter out, this is a COVID-related, this is a close contact, this is a college visit, this is a family vacation. And then if we're only reporting out on Fridays, we're not going to average out the week nor take all that time on Friday to do additional statistics that, that's not going to get us, I don't think, any additional information from a a management perspective.
Well, but, but to push back, though, you know, I know that we have positive tests that have been done through, you know, PCR, right? But we have a bunch of people that are just keeping their kids home because they're sick and not getting them tested because tests are impossible to find. Or, you know, home tests can't be included into the data, right? But the parents know, oh, well, this was a pop. I don't know exactly how
That information, actually, home tests now, that's part of the guidance, that a home test is a permissible to be part of the, the con, the tracing and is included in our data. So when you're looking at that dashboard, that dashboard includes PCR tests, tests that students pop positive at school and any report from outside that could be an at-home antigen test. Catherine, I know that you're on the call, if you want to add anything to that.
Can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, I did misunderstand, I'm sorry, Dave, I thought you were asking for just the attendance. How many kids were absent? There's, there's no way that we could break it down.
I don't want you to break it down. I want you, I want, I would, I, I would think that with the, I don't know for sure that Pepperell's Pharmacy doesn't have, you know, tests, but I know when I stopped by Walgreens and Townsend today, they didn't have tests available, right? There are so few tests available. And the data is coming in so late, so scattershot, because all of this stuff is so completely underfunded. And I'm not putting that on the district. I, I completely understand, you know, what the, what the district is going through. I'm sitting here looking at the highest numbers we've ever seen and us saying it's literally too many for us to be able to even put it on to the, to the website. So I understand that there could be factors like college visits or, you know, doctor's appointments that have nothing to do with COVID. But I also understand that a big chunk of that could be kids that are sick or possibly sick and aren't in school that day. And if we're, if we're looking at twenty, twenty-five, thirty, you know, whatever percent, we're seeing these numbers just shoot right up. And I think it would be, I, I, I think, I don't know, I'm, I'm flustered at, you know, that we can't put that kind of information onto the website.
What is that, what are you hoping to accomplish by having an eighteen percent and eight percent to twenty-eight percent? What does that accomplish through your lens? That's what I'm
Well, sure, but yeah, so for me as a school committee member, I have to start asking a question at, at a certain point if, like I mean, I've seen in person, fifty percent of my students are out, what is the point of that school day? You know, if, if the
But we don't have the ability
You don't have the authority to, to not have school.
No, well, but, but could we push the school day back a year? What is, what is, what is, if, if the primary objective of all of this is to educate kids and fifty percent of kids or fifty-five percent of kids aren't there that day? That's a wasted school day and it's, and it's a budgetary thing. I'm, I'm really, I'm looking at hundreds of kids being out, you know, currently. And us saying, like, we're just going to push on through and I guess not even ask the question of what can we do to, I guess, limit this? And so if we're, if we're seeing every single day a quarter of the student population is absent, you know.
But I guess, Dave, that's, to me, is an administrative issue, like that's not the public nor the school committee that can take action on that data. I, I would expect if the administration starts seeing we go from eighteen to twenty to twenty-five to thirty percent absentee rates and, and they have the data to look at, is that concentrated to classrooms, buildings, et cetera? That they can make the decision on next course of action or make a recommendation on next course of action. Putting that information out for the public doesn't, doesn't do anything. Putting that information out for the school committee, there's, there's really no action that we can take on that. And I think it's misleading and I think it does a disservice to the public if we post numbers that are incomplete, if we post numbers where we're getting reports delayed by a couple of days from the Board of Health, so it looks like the number shot up in, in I mean, you see on Facebook that, oh, we got sixty new cases today. Well, we didn't get sixty new cases today. There were sixty new cases reported today, but those cases were spread out on positive tests that occurred over the last handful of days. They just showed up on the dashboard today. So I think that does more of a disservice than providing kind of that high-level view once a week on, hey, here's where we're at. Here's kind of the trends that we're seeing. But I don't, I'm not seeing a connection to any decisions that, that we could make based on that or, or attendance data, but that's that's just my opinion.
And, and again, just going back to whether or not it's realistic, this was beginning to, to bubble up prior to the, the Omicron variant that was happening with Delta. It's, people unable to do their jobs and it's not, it's not a question of whether or not we can continue to maintain the, the dashboard with the current staffing because we can't. It, it just isn't doable. There, there's no way it can continue. And for the nurses to be able to do their job during, during the school day, it's just not possible. Which would in essence require, I mean, it's gotten to the point where I've had to, you know, making this recommendation tonight. And this is the intent of the district. I, I don't even necessarily think it's something that the committee would vote on. But it's something that it, it is our intent to move in this direction so that we can make sure that the nurses are able to, you know, deal with COVID in the schools, but also be able to deal with all their other responsibilities in the school as well.
I lost track where Randy, I think you were next. Comments?
I just wanted to say going to once a week, not the best idea as far as for information out to parents, but completely understandable. I would rather the nurses do the jobs that they have in front of them with, with the students and the staff, have them be safe, have all of that work be done rather than have the administrative work of a daily number on the website. Everyone's pretty much aware of there's COVID in the, in the communities, there's COVID all around. We know it's in the schools that kids are coming in and we're trying to catch it. I'd feel much better knowing that the nurses' attention are on the students and making sure that anybody who's not feeling well is tested, that they're doing all the background work to make sure that everybody who needs to stay home stays home. And that if they can be in school, they know that they can be in school and that they're aware of things. I'm very, I, I'm good with the once a week COVID update on the website. And I don't think the attendance numbers give any kind of information for parents other than maybe start to really kind of put them into a frantic mode of, oh, my gosh, there's twenty-five percent of the kids out. I can't send my kids in and that, and we're just going to escalate because parents are fearful of why kids are not in school. I don't think that's a good idea.
Anybody else? So just to kind of summarize where we're at and Brad, I guess, correct me, so the dashboard will get updated once a week on Fridays with, and I think you've already made this change, just the top half. It shows the graph numbers per building.
Yes.
Will that be a, that'll be a snapshot of what you know as of Friday?
Yes.
So it's not a, it's not an average of the week or anything like that, it's just what you know at that point in time?
Yes.
Okay.
How many students are going into the weekend still identified?
Yep. Any other questions, concerns from the committee on that approach? Right, we'll see how that goes and talk about it at our next meeting if it doesn't go as planned. So I appreciate all the efforts on that. I know it's, it's been a huge burden, so thank you for that.
That's all I have until the budget.
All right, next, we've got the North Middle Central High School twenty twenty-two, twenty-three Program of Studies, Mr. McMahon or Ms. Smith or somebody. I saw her face pop up, so.
Thanks, Craig. Yeah, I think Ms. Smith is here, so is Mr. Tanaka, such the principals who are all here this evening. Before I start, I do want to just kind of piggyback Brad and simply acknowledge. Uh, before I start, I do want to just kind of piggyback Brad and simply acknowledge, um, our nurses at the high school. Um, Meg Preston and Jamie Janda, who have been working literally ten, twelve hour days um, since last Monday, um, to do those updates, to make sure they're emailing coaches and parents and all that stuff. So, uh, I can't compensate them any other ways aside from recognizing publicly, but, uh, Catherine as well. But the, the work they're doing is, uh, there's, they're not having lunch most days. I offered to buy them lunch. I think it's, it's kind of a compensatory piece and they go, we don't have lunch right now. We're not taking lunch breaks. So, uh, just a quick side note to acknowledge our nurses. Um, Program of Studies, um, this year's edition was really started last year. Um, kind of looking ahead at the new five by seven schedule that will kick off, uh, the fall of twenty-two. Um, again, this was not just, uh, administrative, uh, act. We, we certainly have to acknowledge our eleven department heads who played a critical role in making this come together. Uh, as well as our guidance counselors and Sandy Jameson and Sue Hamel all played a big role in this. Uh, feel really good about it. Uh, we're excited about some changes we're, we're making for next year with our courses and course offerings. Um, I was feeling excellent earlier until Susan Robbins found out a typo, which Sue will address that. Lori and I spoke and Lori has addressed it and it'll be corrected first thing tomorrow, but I do appreciate Sue finding that. Uh, sorry Brad and Nancy for that. Um, but, um, no, we're getting, we're in a good direction right now. Uh, going next year from eight classes to seven, um, is something I think kind of speaks to what Brad Brooks talked about earlier. From an SEL standpoint, um, you know, we have a lot of kids right now, as an example, kids that are out five to ten days with COVID or close contact. They're coming back and have to connect with eight teachers on their makeup work. Um, you know, I, I sent an email to staff today about incompletes. We anticipate the end of quarter two based upon absenteeism right now. So, uh, you know, certainly going down to seven next year, uh, is something we're excited about. And, um, you know, well, it won't be without some challenges, but, uh, we, we've really, really tried to be proactive with concerns you might have regarding the scheduling for next year and address those, um, kind of in the moment. But as far as course offerings go, I, I know, I believe Robin shared the program studies a while back with you folks. And really happy to answer any questions you might have. Uh, we will address the, the math, uh, snap food that Sue found. I'll, I'll worry speak to that in a moment, but, uh, really want to answer any questions you might have about the course offerings, the program studies. Uh, any justice we may have made, um, and open any sort of dialogue that you have with us. You all loved it. You all loved it. That's perfect. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Sue. No problem.
No, it's okay. Just wanted to say I'm excited to see all the project lead the way courses. And I think there was at least, uh, one more added. So there was, um, definitely some exciting additions to the program of studies. I won't have kids in the school anymore come the fall. So sad they'll be missing out on that, but I'm excited for the future students.
Good, thank you.
Knock on wood. I mean.
Oh, come on.
Uh, anybody else with questions? So I just had a question on the removal of, uh, of the ASL three course. Uh, I believe that if I'm reading this right, there was an online course for those that did ASL one and two. ASL one and two are live instruction courses. Is that correct at the school or those?
Unfortunately, no, Craig, what happened leading into the pandemic, our ASL teacher retired. Uh, we posted the job three times, came up empty with any candidates. Uh, so last year to honor those students that had taken it ASL one or two and enrolled in two or three of the subsequent year, we offered it, uh, online. Uh, so students can fulfill their requirements and knock off ASL two or three. Um, and then moving forward, we're not able to put up addition and it was no longer viable to, uh, offer, um, online. So we had to drop ASL from the, the course catalog.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just to clarify, Lori, do you want to tackle the, uh, the math course? We had a typo one, please?
Yeah, the calculus description has the, the word I M M three concepts in there. And it should say pre-calculus and trigonometry concepts. It was left over from a previous year, so we apologize. It's been, it'll be fixed first thing in the morning.
That is on me. That is not, that is totally on me, not Ms. Smith. So that's on me.
It's on all of us. We all missed it.
I had a slight trauma going back to some of those conversations when I saw the word. Just kidding.
Otherwise, we're, we are excited. Um, again, everything else updated to reflect the new scheduling. Um, and we're excited about that as well. So, um, we have incorporated Flex Block back into the schedule for next year. Uh, which we're excited about that as well. And we're doing a lot of work, uh, internally, um, with our PLC second half of the year to do a lot of staff brainstorming for how to make Flex Block take off again. Uh, we have moved it up early in the day. We found that having it late in the day after lunch was, uh, towards the end, towards the second half of the year became more of a social piece. So we, we've moved Flex after second period for next year. So it is more viable as far as students, uh, utilizing that time, uh, for makeup work, uh, study for a quiz, get ahead in homework. Um, and then offer some workshops as well. We are brainstorming for that with staff. Everything from financial literacy to perhaps even changing attire, uh, and everything between this conversation pieces with staff regarding how to utilize Flex Block to, uh, really enhance the experience of students. So we're excited. Uh, I think there's a lot of, you know, a lot of energy going into the new year. Hopefully, uh, uh, selfishly looking forward to a year as principal without having a mask. Uh, I've been here three years and every year we've been interrupted by COVID. So optimistic that'll be different next year for us. But, uh, I feel the team is strong and, and staffing has been, uh, just remarkable this year. I have to give our teachers a shout out. Um, they were soon, as you know, very hard, but there's, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of insight went into this program studies. And they, they are looking what, what kids want to do. And then that, that makes it kind of rewarding for it. So.
Susan, you have another question?
Yeah, just a, a quick question about the, uh, future educators course. Was that dropped due to lack of interest? I know at one point we had a future educators of America club. I guess that's the right word. That was active, so.
Yeah, that it's, um, we have, um, the numbers when we first put it back into the, this program studies, we had a high number of students that were looking to be educated in the future. Um, right now the numbers have dwindled and we only can offer one section. So it doesn't fit into a lot of kids', um, schedules unfortunately, when you only have one section versus numerous, um, sections. So the option was to take that out and to add, um, another section of some other classes in the English department. With hoping that in the future, if it becomes, you know, an abundance of students are interested in doing that, we'll look at putting that back in. The teacher is still very interested in teaching it, just that we just don't have the, the student numbers right now and we'll just look at it for the future.
Thank you.
All right, Randy?
I see courses come and go because of an interest. Um, and I certainly support, uh, having courses that the students are interested in. Um, but I hate to see courses get lost, like there's no interest now. Um, and if they don't see it, there may not be interest in a couple of years with a new group of kids. Is there any way that we can kind of keep, uh, courses that we've done that have been popular kind of on the back burner and say, this is active? This is inactive so that students might say, you know what? It's inactive. How do I get that activated? Because I might be interested in that. Um, and I'm not sure if that's something that's feasible to be done and how you would do that. But that would prevent courses from getting lost just because of the dip in, uh, for a few years in interest, especially.
Every other year.
Educator.
So they're not really lost, Randy. They're, um, they're still there and the teachers do, um, and they're still willing to teach all those courses. What it is, is that it is based on, it's not just student interest. It's, it's a kind of like what the up and coming fields are in colleges. College that people, the majors that they're looking for, we're trying to keep up with the times with that. But it's also the teachers, when they get to know the students, they talk about things, they, all the departments talk. And especially the, um, some, you know, the department chairs and they talk and we listen to what the kids are interested in and they bring it to the, to the, the table. And we say, okay, do we need to re, we put this back into the program studies and office again? Do we need to do this? Like, so we're all aware in all the departments, what every department does and then what their interests are and what people we have that are interested in doing new courses. And, and we still have a list of them so that when we start hearing kids or guidance hears kids like start talking, that definitely can be looked at, talked about. All right, we should probably bring that back and see what our interest is for the next, you know, next year or the year after type thing.
And to add to that, you know, Lori is right and we, we lean on the guidance conferences a lot for that, Randy. Uh, but one thing we started last year, we're going to keep it on this year was, um, our guidance colleges meet with students individually, um, at the eighth grade and at the high school. And, you know, as part of kind of the program of studies package that everyone receives, it's all electronic now. We could easily mix in a survey. Um, with kind of, you know, courses that were shelved the year or two prior and make those, hey, would you mention this? And then have kid people check off or rate that. So that's something we can certainly incorporate to keep the, uh, to your point, you know, shelving it. You know, we, we couldn't put it in the, in the program studies because if we put it in there, we have an obligation to run it. Uh, however, certainly we can do some, some pre-work with that to see if there's interest and pursue that. That's more than reasonable. Yeah.
Any other questions?
No question. Just wanted to say, I know a lot goes into not just putting the program of studies together, but all the scheduling. So wanted to thank all of you and thank you for, um, the document you put together. You make it pretty easy to figure out what you guys changed year to year. So thank you for all that.
Any other questions or nice compliments before we depart?
All right, if not, then, uh, we'll take a motion to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three North Middlesex High School Program of Studies as presented with the slight typo correction.
They're moved?
Second.
All right, June and Tom, any other questions or comments? All right. So this is to approve the program of studies. Dave? Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Tim and team. I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Um, next up is, uh, the budget message update superintendent. You're muted. Can't hear you.
Got it. Um, we did have a finance committee meeting this morning and, um, it just let the committee know that at this point in time, we have a budget increase of three point zero six percent on FY twenty-two. Um, for the most part, it is a level service budget. We do have some asks in the budget, uh, just to maintain the level of service that we believe needs to be in place moving forward. Um, you know, just keeping in mind, uh, looking at the facilities operation and how that area can improve. The fact that we still don't have, um, a real solid plan at the middle school level around lunch supervision. Uh, we have not been able to find staff, um, to fill those roles. And the fact that we do have to have, um, some flex positions because of the homeschooling situation due to COVID. And just really not, not having, you know, a clear understanding as to what next year is going to look like and how our homeschooling numbers can change. Last year, our homeschool numbers doubled. This year they came down quite a bit, but still, um, it still was up much higher than normal. And that leads to class size issues. So we did put an additional elementary teaching position in there. Um, at this point in time, it looks like it could be, uh, at Ashby, it could also be at Spalding, depending upon how things go. Um, but right now, uh, just looking, looking at the numbers and looking at what could potentially happen, we may need to, um, have an elementary position ready to go should homeschooling change? Or should we have an influx of move-ins over the summer? But right now, again, it's a three point zero six percent budget increase. That's the lowest that we have come in with the preliminary budget message in the last four years. We do have our final, um, budget summit on Wednesday of this week with the towns. And I did share the narrative. The narrative was slightly shorter this year than it had been in years past. It was a twenty-five page document that will be uploaded to the district website tomorrow. Um, I believe it was also a part of everyone's packet, uh, this evening. And more than willing to, um, to take questions if people have them. Right now, our average per pupil cost is still, um, it's, it's at sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. That was, that's based on two thousand and twenty. Um, so again, still competitive. Uh, it, it is below the state average, which is just over seventeen thousand dollars. And it looks as though the annual assessments, again, without governor's numbers, just based off the three point zero six and some assumptions, are going to be in the low sixes, um, which is high for the towns again. But so that is where we are as of right now. Happy to take questions. Again, this is just a preliminary message. If you have questions, you can email me at any point in time. Um, and obviously, uh, the big meeting will probably be the next one in, in February when we have the actual hearing with the joint boards.
Any questions on the budget message? With the percentage? Um, I, my only comment, Brad, I may appreciate there's, uh, unless I'm remembering incorrectly, but it seems like there's some added detail and it's, it's, I think the buzzet budget message for me anyways laid out. Uh, a little easier to read for me than it has been in the past. I appreciate, uh, appreciate you providing all that detail on there.
Very good. It's, um, it's a lot of people working together. Um, it, it's Nancy Milligan, Nancy Haynes, Brad Brooks, Jeremy Hammond. Um, you know, all of us work together on it. So it's, it's a joint effort.
That much, much appreciated. Thank you. If nobody has any questions on that, um, again, for, uh, for the public listening, I encourage you to, to read the budget message that'll be posted tomorrow. Um, and please do reach out with questions, concerns, uh, attend meetings. And, and absolutely show support if, uh, if you support, um, the directions. If there's nothing else, then next is Susan. You're muted, Susan.
Just a, a quick question. When we talk about the, uh, special education FY twenty-three budget, as collaborative schools, private schools, what does Massachusetts schools mean?
We have, uh, Susan, we have, uh, three students who are enrolled in, uh, public school districts within the state of Massachusetts. So we have a couple of students, Grodd and Dunstable or, or Littleton or whatever. If we pay a tuition to those students, then we parse it out that way. Or to those schools, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. I just didn't understand what that term meant. Appreciate that. All good.
All right. Is there anything from, uh, accelerated repair? Lisa's not on. I'm assuming no. We did have a finance, uh, committee meeting this morning. I think most of that, uh, was covered in the budget message discussion. Um, Tom, I'm assuming there's nothing with negotiation personnel. Uh, so policy, Randy?
Uh, we have, uh, tonight, the policy, uh, subcommittee has two policies up for adoption. So this would be a second reading. We've already approved them for our first reading. I have not heard from anybody on the committee or the public on any suggestions for changes or any questions on the, these two policies. The two policies up for a, for adoption are IHBG dash R homeschooling and AA school district legal status. Um, so, uh, we can go ahead and vote on adopting those two. I don't know if we want to break it down to first and second readings.
Uh, yeah, we can do those two, approve those two that are, that are up for adoption.
Um, then I will go ahead and move that we adopt policy IHBG dash R homeschooling and AA school district legal status.
Second.
Any questions on these two policies? All right. So this is to approve and adopt, uh, IHBG dash R and policy AA. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will, yes, those are approved unanimously. Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to take the next three, uh, individually, uh, BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings. We have been asked, uh, to kind of look at this policy and kind of update it for what we want the school committee participation to be uh, from the public, um, as well as, uh, just kind of update it for the, you know, what's been going on. Uh, so we have completely revamped, uh, BEDH, looking at other policies in Massachusetts, M A S C. And, uh, some talking amongst ourselves about what we think, uh, would work in this district. I hope everybody had a chance to go ahead and read that. This is just for a first reading, so it will be up uh, for comment from the school committee and from the public, um, on any suggestions that we do. But I'm going to, uh, go ahead and move that the school committee vote to approve. But I'm going to go ahead and move that the school committee vote to approve policy BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings for our first reading as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments, Susan, on this one?
Yes, I do. Under number one and D. As in Delta. I don't understand what that means. Maybe it just needs a comma that'll help me, but what? Okay, so when speech is not constitutionally protected. But what speech is constitutionally protected in this environment? That's what I didn't understand.
So what you're looking at, which number in bullet? I didn't.
Number one and then letter D, the bottom of the second page, the chair of the meeting after a warning reserves the right to terminate. Like it's, maybe it's just kind of wonky wording that I'm not getting it, but I don't quite understand that. So maybe we don't need to figure that out here. Maybe the policy subcommittee can smooth it out a little, so.
I read that as like threatening speech or like yelling fire in a crowded theater type of, type of comments that would not be free speech in the sense that you have the, you have the right to say what you want, but I mean, that's how I read it, but if it's not clear to you, then it's probably not clear to somebody else and we should just take a second look. I remember similar words in one of the other policies that, that this was modeled after, so we can, or the policy subcommittee can certainly.
I have written down, we can certainly go over it again. We have a policy meeting on Wednesday.
I thought it was making a point that constitutionally protected speech is handled one way and not constitutionally protected speech is handled another way. And I don't know the difference between the two, quite frankly. And maybe I'm reading too much into it, but I'm starting to get confused. No, I got it. Like if somebody's going way out of bounds and inciting a riot. Then yeah, we should have the right to shut that down, but the wording is confusing, that's all.
Yeah, I just, I guess I just don't know what I'm confused about, Susan, because like, you know, not constitutionally protected speeches along the lines of yelling fire or, you know, threats against people in a place where they have to be.
Oh.
Right?
Okay, so what they're saying, what they're saying is the speech that's not constitutionally protected are things that are true threats.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm, I'm in favor of this moving forward.
No, I'm not saying, I, I get it. I just, the wording was really throwing me off and maybe I just read it tomorrow and I'll be fine. It wasn't clear what the message was when I was reading it. That's all. I'm not saying I agree, disagree, any of that. Sure, if somebody's inciting a riot, then yeah, we can shut it down. No, no question. I just got confused and maybe that's all me.
I guess my only comment, and this is more for the viewing audience than the committee. I know we've had some educational moments, I'll call them, about what public participation is intended for at, at these meetings. Or really any public meetings. And I found some interesting, an interesting article from a fellow school committee member in another community who articulated the fact that they're on a committee with some wicked smart people, as he says. But those wicked smart people are the only people on the planet that he's not allowed to talk to about school committee matters outside of these meetings. And that's the same for all of us on this committee that if, if something comes up about something that is in the purview of this committee as members, we're not allowed to talk about it with each other, especially with, with a quorum of members. Because that would violate open meeting law. So that puts the preciousness of the time we have together in these meetings that much more elevated because this is, this is the only time we have to talk about these issues and get through our business. So we have to put structure around public participation and really insist and encourage folks to, to reach out over email and give us time to digest and process the questions and the comments and the feedback that, that the public wants to provide. So we're able to incorporate that into the meeting and take those points and ideas under advisement and consideration. Otherwise, if they're sprung up during public communication, often we're not allowed, well, we aren't allowed to engage. But if that particular item's not on the agenda, we're not even allowed to talk about it later in the meeting. Which further puts that perception that we're, we're not responding or being responsive to the issues brought up. So by having that in advance, we can, we can add it to the agenda if it needs to be. We can do some research and provide some further information and get back to folks. When things do come up in public comment, we're able to refer that to a subcommittee or a future agenda. Or we simply say, thank you for your input and we have to move on. And again, I completely know that that's frustrating. So the intent of this policy, and I encourage the public to read through it, make sure it makes sense. Make sure it addresses some of the concerns that I know some folks have had. But again, the intent is to provide some, some guardrails, some boundaries around how we interact with folks at the meeting while still being here for getting our business done and, and discussing and deliberating around the issues that are within our purview and on our agenda. So hopefully that makes sense. And again, please, please reach out if there's any questions or concerns over that.
I think I figured it out.
Okay.
It just needs to have a period after not constitutionally protected. And then give examples of what's not constitutionally protected speech. I think that will make it clear. So if someone like embarrassingly myself didn't understand the difference between constitutionally protected, not constitutionally protected.
If you don't like a run-on sentence, Susan, that's fine. We can get rid of the run-on sentence.
No, I'm not trying to be the English teacher. I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to say.
Yeah, I think if you break it up and say like, for example, or something like that, it would make sense.
Examples of, of speech that's not constitutionally protected will be terminated are something like that.
Yeah, I mean, doesn't it, doesn't it say that with, which is not constitutionally protected? Because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of peace or incitement to imminent lawlessness conduct or contains obscenities? I mean, isn't, isn't that the, the isn't that the example of not constitutionally protected speech?
Probably, but blockhead me couldn't read it. So maybe there's some other blockheads out there. We could clear it up a tiny bit. Don't think I'm disagreeing at all. I absolutely support that idea and having.
We will take a look and see if there's a little bit clearer way to state the same thing.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on, on this one?
No, just to kind of back cover a little bit what you were saying, Craig, for the public is please take a look at the policy. We've included a lot of different ways that you can interact and give feedback to the school committee, not just at our full school committee meetings. There's the subcommittee meetings and just a couple of different ways that are listed out now so that we can interact a little bit better and get feedback from the community.
Cool. Do you want to go through the other two, Randy, or do you want to motion each one separately? I think your motion is already, didn't you?
I put a motion in for this one already, so.
Okay. You did?
Yes.
You and June. So seeing no other hands up. So this is to approve BEDH for a first reading. So this will go out for, for review and input. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. Next.
Next, we have policy ACAB, sexual harassment. This is one that is an update from the attorneys for new laws that were put into place. So I will move that the school committee vote to approve policy ACAB, sexual harassment for our first reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments on this one?
Long.
All right. So this is to approve policy ACAB for a first reading. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. And last but not least.
And the last one is policy ADC, smoking on school premises. This was just a small update for, I think it was just putting in language for the different types of smoking that are available today. That we don't want on the premises. So I make a motion to move that the school committee vote to approve policy ADC, smoking on school premises for our first reading as presented.
Second.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions or any questions, comments?
If there's such thing as little cigars, or is there also such thing as electronic little cigars? Like I had no idea all these things existed, but okay. I get it, they're just examples.
Dave, you have a question?
What about non-tobacco products? Given the state's legalization of marijuana, should that also be included?
No, that is under our drug policy.
Okay.
Because it's still illegal for under 18, or under 21.
Under 21.
What about our staff with marijuana on the property? They're 21 for the most part.
Treat, treat it the same way as alcohol.
Okay. What about guests?
They, they wouldn't be permitted in the building.
What basketball games or?
So there is a separate, just for clarity for everybody, there is a separate policy that covers that, or is there a?
Yes, there is a separate policy for drug and alcohol.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Oh, so marijuana is still considered a drug?
Hmm.
He's not. Well, we won't go there.
Right. Seeing no other comments, this is a policy ADC for first reading. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June? Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yeah, I will vote yes. So that is also unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Anything else, Randy, on policy? All right. Any emergency business that was not anticipated? All right. If not, I will take the magic motion. Most everybody wants to stay here.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Tom? Yes.
I'll vote yes. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. I appreciate it.
Bye.
Night.